Hi, welcome everybody to the Shelburne Planning Commission on November 14th. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I just want to have a one note is the Commissioner Jean is likely to be about 30 minutes late. There was potentially getting him on the phone at this point. I feel like if that's not working out, we'll just, he'll be here around 7:30, that's great. We do have a quorum. So the first item of the agenda is approval of the agenda. Take a motion to approve.
Second?
Moved by Stephen, seconded by Kate. Any discussion? Think we're pretty straightforward tonight. All right, seeing none, all in favor of the agenda as stated? Aye? Okay, now we have two sets of minutes to approve. We will start with the minutes from October 24th. Take a motion to approve those. Moved by Steve?
Seconded.
Seconded by Stephen? All right, any discussion?
One very small thing, my name is P-H, not V.
That's important.
So, I mean, I don't think you have to amend, but going forward, if we can just make sure it's P-H. Or you can do Steve, that's okay too.
Good correction. Okay, and... Let's see if I can read my writing. Nope, all right. I think my comments are nothing that really needs correcting or anything. Any comments from anybody else?
No.
Okay, all in favor of the meetings of October 24th with the one name spelling correction? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All right, now we'll move on to the meetings from the joint, minutes from the joint retreat with the Natural Resources Committee on November 5th. Take a motion to approve those. Moved by Steve, seconded by Neil. And any discussion?
And that is that the draft excluded Bob Pagman, and he was actually there.
Right. Okay.
Here, not there.
Right, right. Which was there. Here. Okay. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't really have, I didn't have any comments on these.
No. Neither.
Nope, all right. All in favor of the minutes from November 5th? Aye?
Aye.
And Stephen is abstaining. Good clarification. All right. Do we have any disclosures this evening from anybody?
No.
Seeing none? Open to the public?
Sure.
You're just in time.
Right?
Don Rennel from Natural Resources, just wanted to say thank you for meeting with us the last week, whatever it was, it was a great meeting, we thought, too. At our meeting last night, we were inspired to try to reserve a section of our ongoing meetings in the future for Sean to develop maps, since maps was so important at the meeting. So we hope to be able to crank some stuff out there that'll be continuing useful in that regard. I wanted to ask two questions. One, do you have any priorities in that regard? And two, do you think we might need to get some other assistance besides Sean, because we can only get so much of his time?
It's a good question. The, I would just say the priority as far as the plan update goes is really to address the conservation lands. I think that was our real priority. Beyond that, there's a lot around maps. I wouldn't say that anything is necessarily more pressing than anything else at this point, unless Kate, you had something bubbling up.
If I can interrupt, Jean did just email and said, "I was out of range, please call back. On my way to."
Sure.
And he gave me a different note.
I think it would be really helpful if you guys could work together to create a map that shows really high-value lands for, you know, off the top of my head, habitat, water resources, maybe stormwater infiltration ability? I don't know, I, you guys would probably have a better sense for what some of those criteria would be. But if you could start to sort of create an overlay that might contain some of those areas, so that we have a basis for trying to prioritize retention of these areas, particularly in the growth area, where we've got to somehow fit all this development in. It would be really nice to create some kind of, I guess where I'm going is maybe develop some sort of an overlay that could be, you know, where we don't want development to go.
Hello?
Hi, Jean.
For whatever reason.
Looking at an all-in-one approach, or a series of overlays?
It could be...
Am I on? Yes, you are.
It could be done as a series of overlays, but the idea would be to have in one place information that, you know, developer looking to develop, property owner, the DRB, you know, could all be looking at the same resource that would provide some direction and guidance, which, I mean, we just don't seem to have that now. So, I guess, yeah, approach, I think we, one of the things we seem to have gotten some agreement on at the meeting last week was that the, you know, there's kind of a bullseye on the growth area. And so maybe those areas would be good to prioritize first. And then, you know, look beyond, once that's kind of, we sort of have a better harness on that.
No, I, piggybacking off that, some of the stuff that you're asking for, I know from just playing around a lot with BioFinder, I know that a lot of that data is available, but I hear where you're going, and I think it's taking that data and turning it into a way that is approachable for use. Because I know that the BioFinder data is available, and a lot of things can be looked up there, but from a Natural Resources Committee perspective, if there are areas in particular that have sensitivities, being able to raise those issues a little bit, so that when any projects come up in a particular area, there's ready, ready information that the town can have to just be able to have those discussions, and know where to really just have heightened awareness.
Yeah, I guess the idea would be to maybe develop a tool that could help us shape development as it emerges, so that it avoids these very high-value areas. But first, we have to know where those are, and how they connect. Like, that might be something that adds value in, is the connectivity to other places of value. So we've got like a little bit of a network there, so that might raise the profile of something. It's just a way to start to have a more thoughtful discussion when, during the development process, about how we maintain some of these areas. Because once they're developed, they're gone.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so that, so think about it through the lens of, all this stuff could potentially be developed, you know?
One, one issue that came up last night, we're talking, for instance, habitat, wildlife habitat. Wildlife may be in a forestry area, could be different from wildlife than it'd be in a meadow area, or a water-based area. So, in order to get good maps with that, we may need to get educated boots on the ground out there to do some inventorying. And, you know, so that's where, we do have a limitation. And if that's, we were talking about, you know, should we try to access the budget approach to get some, maybe get some funds to help that kind of an effort? I was just wondering what your thoughts might be on that.
Could the open space funds be used for something like that? Because it would be towards the preservation, and an informed method for adding to them?
We've always viewed the open space fund as being just, you know, acquisition-oriented. So I, there may be some resistance on the committee to think that way, because we've had, you know, others suggesting open space funds, "Hey, let's make some recreation areas." And, you know, once we open the floodgate, who knows where those monies go? So...
Well, I'm just, you know, in a time of budget tightness, maybe to offer to, you know, oftentimes you can get a grant, but there's a match, municipal match, maybe the open space funds could be used for that. It wouldn't be, you know, a huge amount, but it would show, you know, some skin in the game. I think that makes some sense. I mean, you could probably, with the BioFinder, get a pretty broad brush idea of where we think the important areas are, and then that could frame maybe a grant application to have somebody come in and sort of verify in the field, you know, where, to get more granular information? I don't know.
Yeah. And also, just back onto the point of highlighting areas and making sure that we've got, we've got data around certain areas. Not to say that we're targeting certain lots or anything like that, or trying to go up against developers. It's more, the one example that pops into mind is BioFinder has a layer around amphibian crossings, road crossings. And they're, they're highlighted as very important crossings on roads, and they're listed around the state, and Shelburne has one of them that happens to be on Pond Road, just east of Dorset. And seeing that in the SIP, there was the idea to pave Pond Road again at some point, and I would imagine that in order to do any work on roads like that, they would need to be compliant with state things, and I don't fully have my head around how much goes into that process. And would it be that, okay, there is a designated amphibian crossing here, so if you are going to do any work on that road, we need to make sure there's a culvert, so that that can be addressed? It's those types of things. I mean, I know that there are already wetland considerations, and another thing is the forest blocks to maintain habitat-wildlife connectivity. Knowing that that's just a big topic, and it applies across multiple lots, it's more just to have that understanding as a factor when there is a DRB review, and where potential buildings get cited, is whatever we can do to protect those habitat corridors, to the extent we can, we should.
I think in answer to your original question, which is, well, do you, the Planet Commission, have ideas for maps that you could bring in? For me, it's hard to kind of rattle off a bunch of, here's, here's what I think would be a great idea to see. But if the Natural Resources Commission came forward and said, "Here's a list of 10, which three are most important to y'all," you know, I could, feel like I could pretty confidently, you know, go through that and come up with my top three. So anyways, just, I don't mean to throw it back at you, but that's, that's how I would be more comfortable responding to that, to that.
First step for us, as we block off some time with Sean to do this, to ask that question. What can he do?
Yeah, well, I guess that's the question, you mentioned...
Whether it makes sense to hire somebody to do some of this mapping, that, you know, is beyond what Sean can do in, you know, his timeframe? What do you figure his limit, nice limit, is for doing this kind of work? Just given that, you know, the first priority that we'd have would be the mapping, the open space, and then these other things, I think, would be secondary to that. What's your guess on what he can handle?
I can't really speak for him, I, you know, he's got his job and his family issues, and tries to block off time for us, as he's able to, so... That's why we said, "Well, since you come to our meetings, we can block off some time there, and get done what we can get done." Thought that was a smart approach. So, well, we'll ask him and see. I know he feels, feels limited. Anytime I talk to him about some of this, you know...
Mapping is that there are different private consultants out there who can do this kind of work. There are people at the Regional Planning Commission who could do some of the work. As part of the town's membership in the Regional Planning Commission, we get a certain number of hours of service from their folks, and it's often used for mapping. And so, some of the things that you may be thinking of, that the Natural Resources Committee may be thinking of, could be given to the RPC as assignments, and it wouldn't cost us anything if it was up to the 10 or 12, or however many hours. They've varied in terms of their policies. Last year, they were even more generous than they had been in the past. But my point is simply that some basic level of mapping is something that wouldn't cost the town anything if, if it was a project that the RPC could do.
That's a good resource.
Yeah, any feedback that you all have, just based on priorities that you're seeing, and then if you want to, I mean, not that the work needs to be done, and then say, "Okay, which ones do you like best?" But as you're conceptualizing which maps. I know also Sean had the, what was he calling it, the scenic...
Scenic views.
Yeah, scenic views, and that will make time on a future agenda, and he can come in and show us that. But I know that's something that he had put some time into. But clearly, like wildlife crossings, corridors, forest blocks, anything that we can be more informed around maintaining those types of things would be ideal.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and thanks for, all of you joining the joint retreat, too. That was good. Yeah.
You're not going to stay for the public hearing?
Oh, right, yeah. All right.
If there was a map that you could install, that I could install online, and I could control it remotely, that would be great, but...
I'll go over there, but...
Plan and Commission out. Watch the Plan and Commission anywhere, from any of your devices.
And be able to control the agenda.
On Jason's laptop.
I was just forgetting, I know that there's something where you can say, "Don't have the password."
If this had been loaded in a guest account or something, but we didn't do that. Yeah, I'll just go over there and sit and make sure that it doesn't go to sleep.
Sure. And Jean, are you there? Did you just turn off your...
I'm here.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, hold on. I just went on mute, otherwise this was background noise.
Great. Thank you.
Should be there 15, 20 minutes.
All right.
All right.
That's that whole situation where, "Do I really sound like that?" Awesome. Okay. I'll stop sucking helium at some point. And we'll move on to the public hearing for the zoning bylaw amendment. And...
One of my notes was to just remind you to declare it open.
The hearing is hereby declared open for the zoning amendment discussion. I had one largely just administration kind of question regarding this change, because this would go into the zoning bylaws as Section 22. And I know that we've made the, we've made references from the 17 dot A to Section 22, where it will reside. When I was looking at the zoning bylaws earlier, there's, there still is the, it refers to it in Section 17. Is there some change we need to make in the actual zoning bylaws?
Well, 17A, which is what it is currently, would be going away.
Right, it's effectively going away, but does this change then? So in the zoning bylaws, this would just effectively go in there as 2217 would just be gone, and then that document isn't current?
And the table standards would be updated.
Right, okay. And this document would still, would it reside in that same, or would it be a link to an external?
I think it would be still bound separately.
Yeah.
That would be my thought.
Right, yeah. All right. I don't know that we need to read this verbatim or anything. Was there a...
It was a quick and dirty little presentation, series of slides, if you wanted to do that for the benefit of people watching, or...
Yeah, for the benefit of, this is being recorded?
Yeah, this was the same series of slides that we used when speaking with the, with the select board.
Mm-hmm.
And can just quickly run through it. There is a little bit more that I have at the end. The background for it, you know, why was form-based zoning put into place in Shelburne to begin with? This is probably the slide that Kate should be delivering, since she was around at the beginning, and was one of the people who was a force behind getting a new form of zoning that recognized the special qualities of the Route 7 corridor, and some objectives were to promote economic activity, emphasize design and site layout more, and put less emphasis on use. How is it different, we all know here, in this room, but people watching may not, that form-based zoning emphasizes the types of buildings, or the forms, rather, that the buildings take, and that space that we call the public realm, that's between the buildings and the street. It's got a more detailed map, basically, this districting scheme, and we will talk a little bit about that. The hope and the goal is faster permitting, with things being done, basically more work done upfront with the application process, but less involvement of the DRB, so faster, faster permits. It's an overlay, as you know. Usually, those are things that add restrictions, and they're also usually not optional, but in this case, it is optional, and it has a lot of benefits. It also has additional requirements. The idea was, at one point, to have a period of time where we would transition over to form-based zoning. We haven't figured that out just yet. It was first adopted in 2016, and that amendment in 2017, as I've mentioned before, was all part of the discussion or the debate, having to do with adult-oriented uses. And after the first proposal was developed with the help of one set of consultants, Brandy Saxton, who's a Vermont-based consultant, helped. So, the, really, the 30,000-foot level of what the changes are, are summarized on this slide. It has been reformatted, the whole document, and like you said earlier, it's been renumbered. The regulating plan map has been cleaned up a bit, and then has also been revised by the removal of one of the fronted zones. There have been some clarifications made to the building form standards and the lot standards. Parking requirements have been updated. Landscaping, screening, and lighting standards were updated. There was a lot of new material added, having to do with stormwater and sustainable design, and that was done with the benefit of a subconsultant, Amy McCrallis, whose specialty is stormwater. There was a lot of work done on the section called "previously developed sites," which will make it a lot easier, I think, for people to choose to use form-based zoning in the future, because right now, it's not obvious to them what happens to the development on the properties that they already have. And there were some definitions that were updated. Now, I have got a more detailed list of changes, if people were here and they wanted to talk about it, but it's not something I would necessarily go through, but since we don't really have an audience.
Yeah, I was actually, I was thinking that there would be people here, and we need to get into detail, that's why. I think this is probably good, if people have questions, and the history is available, and questions can still be asked.
Yeah, these documents are going to be online on the town's website. Once this meeting is done, it'll be moving from the upcoming meetings folder to the meetings already held, the archives. So if people want to look at any of this stuff, they can. Now, this is a hearing, it's actually two hearings in one. The other proposal has to do with modifications to the historic preservation, or what we sometimes call the historic preservation and design review overlay, which is another overlay district. I have that. And I, actually, one of the things I thought may make it a little bit easier, to just summarize, what's going on with this proposal? Right now, under this overlay district that we're talking about, the process is the same, regardless of the type of development. So, a project that has to have site plan review, or conditional use review, or subdivision review, if it's in the district, the same steps have to be followed. They apply. The application that has to do with the historic aspects or design aspects go to the HPDRC. They have a meeting, they make a recommendation to the DRB. The DRB makes a decision, and then that decision goes to the zoning office, and a permit can be issued. And that can happen, you know, two, over two or more months, to make all of those pieces work. For things that don't need site plan or conditional use review, it can be compressed quite a bit, because we, the longer time period is, is a result of having to do a hearing notice for the DRB. So it gets maybe down to three weeks or so, but it still has the same steps. Application comes in, design review, folks meet, DRB meets, makes a decision, and it goes to Revvy, so that he can sign the permit. And even the changes to a previous application, with some rare exceptions, same steps. The rare exceptions are when we are smart enough to think, "They're going to be back." And the DRB, as part of its decision, says, "Yeah, if you come back, you won't have to come back to us, you can just go to the HPDRC." The proposed amendments keep the same path for things that have to go through conditional use site plan or subdivision review, so it doesn't really save them any time. But they're never going to be, unless we change the conditional use site plan or subdivision requirements, and that's another, you know, possible thing. Still going to be looking at two, two months or so. But for projects that don't require site plan, conditional use, we're looking at the possibility of two weeks or so. And then there's this possibility, too, of generally dealing with amendments to applications the same way, and those two could be shortened to two weeks. The reason why I've got this kind of fainted version is that sometimes those things that are changes will go to the DRB. This is just the graphical representation of what was in your packets, which is the text version that, whoops, does the same thing by amendments to the design review overlay article. Whoops. So, I'm going to get down to that as soon as I can, and show that in a red line form. What's the faster way to page down, since, is it controls, down arrow? Whoa, that's not what I want.
Bar on the right?
Okay, yeah, I was trying to fish that bugger out there, too. So... Whoops. So what we were just talking about. Wah! This is the dangers of using someone else's computer. And thank you, by the way. So the amendments, again, are to Article 15, Chapter 15, as it were, and you've seen, you've seen the edits before, but if there were questions about them, you may find it easier to deal with this piece discreetly, and then have your discussion about design review, or rather, form-based. But it's through the addition of 1535, which is not there now. It's a carve-out.
Yeah, and I, the, the last time that we talked about this, and the, and this is the language that came out of it, it sounded like everybody was fairly on board, because it, it effectively streamlines process a little bit more, which I think everybody's in favor of.
Yeah, and I think you and I were at a meeting just at the select board.
Right, select board.
And we were talking about it, and we're like, "Wow, that problem could be fixed pretty soon."
Yeah, and I realized that when I said my thing, that was the one piece I forgot to toss in there, but, but yeah. So if, yeah, happy to entertain any discussion on this, if, if there are any thoughts to the language or comments.
It looks pretty good. Any other...
Yeah.
Here, when we did this one, I can't, I mean, I think we vetted it pretty, pretty well the last round through.
No, but I don't have a problem with it. Yeah.
Yeah. Good, yeah, these are the good kinds of changes.
Right.
Yeah, I think this looks good, and that would... Yeah, I think this looks good, and that would, and, so you're basically just presenting the, both of the items that are up for hearing, and then we'd go through and make our motions?
Yeah, pretty much, if there aren't people to ask questions.
Yeah, it didn't seem like there were any questions, and I just wanted to make sure that at least as far as form-based went as well. I know we've been through it so many times, but any questions or anything?
I wanted to put a sidecar question on it, which is, kind of following up on Dean's point about, at some point in the future, we may do away with the existing zoning regulations in that area, and I'm just wondering what the, what the mechanism is that would cause us to, as a board, to say, now is time to do that? Like, what does that time, timing look like? Is that five years in the future, or 10 years in the future? Is it, something happens on Shelburne Road, and we say, now is the time? What does that?
Megan's been asking about this big-picture form-based zoning discussion.
Yeah, and...
I think of it as being related.
I do think that it would probably, I mean, it would be valuable to have some time on an agenda just to talk about what that would look like. I've recently just been trying to wrap my head around the, all the little things that just need to be tied up. I mean, I, it doesn't strike me as being just as easy as...
I'm not looking to open a bond.
No, 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 I get that. No, this is good, because I've been thinking about it a lot as well, and since the beginning, it came in as optional, but the idea was, well, eventually, especially if it works, we would want this to be standard, not, I mean, if for no other reason, because it makes more sense to have one set of regulations than having to keep track of two. And I was starting to look through some of the zoning regs and just, I don't know that it's just as easy as saying, okay, Section 22 that has the form-based zoning overlay now would now replace everything that happens in Growth Area Two. I don't know that it's that, or Growth Areas One and Two. I don't know that it's that simple. I would love it for somebody to say, yes, it's that simple, but I feel like it's not.
I don't think that it is.
Right.
I mean, one thing that may be a consideration is using what would be a pretty significant change as an opportunity to try to go to a single set of regs, a unified bylaw. And I'm not sure, did Virginia's have a unified bylaw? Will this...
We're working on it.
Okay. Yeah, and so, that may be one possible vehicle for doing it, because as you're putting together that unified bylaw, you can be integrating all of the parts of form-based zoning that you want into it, and it would, it would never have to worry about missing references, because you'd be building it, basically.
And, and Jean, just since you're on the phone, I don't know if you have any questions, and you might be walking in the door any minute now.
Uh, no, I'm just, I'm just outside.
All right.
Coming in now.
Cool, we'll see you in a minute.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that might be worth it, and as far as, as far as timeline for that, say, maybe sometime early next year? Maybe just throw an agenda item on there to, to start getting the wheels turning? Because I think it is something to work forward towards, especially since we're starting to get more traction with projects coming through form-based zoning. Yeah.
Cool. Thanks for the conversation on that.
That work?
Yeah.
Cool. All right. All right, welcome. No problem. So, well, if those two things are, I think we're set with discussion there, then the draft motions are in our packets if somebody would like to, starting with the form-based zone.
I'll, I'll do it.
All right.
I move that public hearing, I propose changes to the zoning bylaw, which would modify the regulating plan, building form and lot development standards, pub, public realm standards, parking, landscaping, screening and lighting standards, sustainable design, signage standards, previously developed sites, and definition, and which were duly warned for this evening, be closed.
Is there a second?
Sure.
All right, moved by Stephen, seconded by Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll carry on with the motion then. I move to approve the associated zoning change report dated November 14, 2019, and direct staff to distribute said report and copies of the amendment proposal as required by statute.
All right, moved by Stephen. Seconded by Neil. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Well, and we got the next one for the design review overlay. Keep going.
Somebody else can do it.
I know, right? All right, there we go. I know.
Propose changes to the zoning bylaw, which would simplify the application and review procedure for certain minor projects proposed within the village design review overlay district, and which were duly warned for this evening, be closed.
All right, moved by Steve.
Second.
Seconded by Kate. All in favor?
Aye. I move to approve the associated zoning change report dated November 14, 2019, and direct staff to distribute said report and copies of the amendment proposal as required by statute.
All right, moved by Steve.
Second.
Seconded by Kate. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. That's good. Yeah, or was that, I think, yeah, the first motion was the close.
Oh, okay.
We can double close it, though.
Automatically.
Just to be double, feels anticlimactic somehow. Right? Okay, so moving on to the capital improvement plan topic? We, we are. Yeah, this one might have some time. I, Dean, I see you have the, the presentation up there. I would, maybe just to set the stage a little bit, Dean and I attended the Select Board meeting, and they, this was a topic, and they're getting into their discussions, what, in their sit-down day is early December?
The 11th of December.
Yeah. So, there's gonna be a lot of detail being worked out there, but they've, the, the core of the budget, things that effectively can't change, is they're referring to as the nut. And based on the initial assessment, there are still some variables coming in that might edge things a little bit higher, but it's, it's already looking at a, just over a 4% increase in, in what was, I'm assuming that would be what would have to be asked for.
Yeah, I mean, it's...
The budget is basically increasing.
Right, if, in a perfect world, they don't have to increase the tax rate, but the budget might still grow. We're not in that world, because they were thinking of the tax base perhaps growing between a half and 1%, so if the budget's going up 3% to 4% with these nuts in it alone, you know you're talking about a fairly significant increase in the tax rate.
Right, because then there's gonna be other things that get added on. And I'm saying that mostly just to keep in mind, and I, historically, when, when I've looked at these things, I really am looking at projects and making sure they're in, in there, and the, the plan, as has been mentioned a few times, and probably again, is the fiscal, the next fiscal year that's coming up is what the budget gets approved for, and those are the projects that would actually happen. The ones in years past that, they're, they're just, they're on the plan, they're not guaranteed to happen. Where, where we come in and some of our recommendations, there is value to having projects that we want to see done on the plan, even in future years, because that can tie into ability to get grants and those kinds of things. So, it's, there is value to doing this exercise, so in that regard, it's important, but on the other hand, it's, it's also not really an exercise to say, yes, we want all of these things, let's put everything in there, because it's an overwhelming process to begin with. So, just trying to make sure that we're, we keep that in mind. And with that, do we, I mean, these have been in our packets, and we've seen them, is it...
You've seen them, no, there wasn't anything really for me to present other than what you've said, which was about the, basically that slide that Lee presented to the Select Board, and then to just make the observation that unlike a committee that, just like the PADS Committee, that has a, a more specific, narrower focus, and they have this tradition of advancing capital projects, you have the whole waterfront to be thinking about, and it's more thematic, kind of like what Peter Frankenberg was picking up on when he summarized the contents of the plan and the things it emphasized. So, I think you'd be wanting to signal back to the Select Board that, yes, you agree with the continuing investment in bicycle pedestrian facilities, as one example, or you might want to say more about stormwater or some other area, transportation of economic development, or what have you, rather than making edits to specific lines.
And that...
Yeah, themes and, and, you know, if there was a project that was out there, and you felt like there had been enough work to justify including it, and it wasn't included, then you should suggest it. Or, the reverse could be true. This, the idea of paving pond road, this group could say, it really doesn't make sense, given the way that the vote went three years ago, it should come out of the capital plan.
Makes sense to me.
But it's still not mandatory.
Just the recommendation.
The capital plan is a, is a, it's a tool to help the Select Board in future budget years, because some of the thinking's been done. Normally, it gets done around now, and it's been held up a little bit, and then it gets used when the budget is put together in December and January. This year's going to be different in that they're gonna be tied together a bit more, so it doesn't, it won't be as useful, I guess, as some, some years.
When we talked about, when Peter was here, I was having the impression that the, the Select Board was gonna make a proposal of the, of the plan, the budget, and then we were gonna review that? Did I, has that just kind of shifted a little bit, or did I misunderstand?
So, some of the reason why this is coming to you is that state law says, in municipalities that, that adopt these things, the Planning Commission gets a chance to review the hearing draft. So, that's one reason why it's being brought to you. This is not the hearing draft. We thought we were going to see it, but that is not happening because of this decision by the Select Board to basically wrap it up later. So, maybe that's partly answering it, but some communities work more diligently, I guess, or have more experience taking the big ideas in the plan, boiling them down, getting them in the CIP, and then having the CIP really, truly inform the budgeting process.
Our deliverable is to make some recommendations on this, which is not quite draft yet to the Select Board.
This is, yeah, this is a draft, it's not quite final, and the thing that's missing that is in the hearing version is a narrative that goes along with this set of tables. And Peter saves that until the end, basically, because he doesn't want to be writing narrative about stuff that doesn't stay.
Dean, you said we could be suggesting projects?
Possibly. For them to consider.
Yeah, I mean, I would say, for example, if there was, if there was a project idea that was mentioned in the town plan, I'm trying to come up with an example, but if there was one, and it didn't get included, or hasn't been included in the CIP, and you felt, you thought that it should be, that it was really one of the really important things in the comp plan, and to take it the next step, you wanted it in the CIP, the Planning Commission certainly could do that.
One that I think would be in keeping with the town plan, but isn't specifically mentioned as a project in the town plan. It just occurs to me, as we're, we're looking at improving the, every, you know, every part of the town, that we were not really necessarily focusing on the village with anything in particular, but what seems to, I mean, the, doing something in the village to attract economic development, promote business, pedestrian access, provide parking along with that, and, and do, you know, a gateway to the village. It seems like one possible way to do it is to, to take control of Route Seven as it goes through the village from the state, and do things like, I mean, it cursed me as, you know, just driving through Burlington, what they did to St. Paul Street, just this side of Main Street is incredible. They took, like, just a regular street. It was a street, it had sidewalks, it was fine, but they made it spectacular, and, you know, I'd want to locate my business there. The town of Brandon, their village, they totally redid it, and it totally works now, it seems, and, and it seems like it's, it's got some kind of a center to it, but we're, we're still just a, you know, a pass-through on, you know, with Route Seven. There's nothing special about the, the roadway itself that could really be spurring this, you know, the sense that, that here we are, we're, we're the village, and, you know, here we're coming up to Christmas carols again, you know, and the lighting of the tree, and then, you know, we've got the trucks flying by when somebody's trying to, you know, lead the Christmas carols, and there's, there's not that sense of, of traffic calming and, and it makes, something that makes you want to stop in this village. Right, yeah. And I wonder if we could propose, you know, if everybody thinks so, too, we could maybe propose a study to, to look at that, just setting aside some, some money for a study to, to look into what it would take to do that, unless everybody, unless it's been done before, and everybody, you know, knows what it is already.
I don't know that there's been an actual study on that.
There's been an analysis that Lucy Gibson did as part of the Southern Gateway Project to do some, you know, initial number crunching about the costs and benefits of taking over different amounts of the road. So, there are those numbers that are now a couple of years old, but what I hear Stephen talking about is almost like what happens after, or what we would do with the ability to control it and do some traffic calming and streetscape improvements and what have you, that you would need to do a study for. Now, the village plan, which was updated in 2006, has some schematic recommendations, and I don't know that I'm gonna be able to pull it up, but there are some gateway designs, conceptual, and different things that...
He said 2006.
The update was, the original document was done in '88, and then there was an update of it done in 2006. So, you know, maybe it's to recommend an update of the update, although the thing that I just wanted to mention Peter might say is that studies aren't normally included in the capital plan because they're not capital projects. Now, if, if it was something that was really, you could, you could connect the dots, so it was an engineering design that would result in construction, they might go for it, but if it, if it's something less than that, I'm not sure how excited Peter would be to have it. Yeah, and that is, and I'm glad you mentioned it, because that was, that's an outlier. I mean, that's something that, I don't know, wow, like, hub? Yeah. It is kind of the exception. I don't want to discourage you, but just understand that.
There, there, this has come up in Planning Commission discussions in the past, and I think that there's, there's certainly been interest in exploring that option. I think there's a lot that comes with taking over sections of Route Seven. So, it would be, it would be bigger than just us sorting through that, but as far as the capital improvement plan goes, if something is, I mean, those are the types of things that I imagine there might be grants available to figure out what the details might look like, and in order to get that type of grant, if it's in, I mean, would that be the type of thing that would need to be in a SIP in order to show that the municipality has some thinking going for it, and it's not just a committee looking for...
Well, so one of the things that, there has already been one, a set of engineering drawings developed as an output from that village plan update, and it would be streetscape improvements along Falls Road from the Route Seven intersection to a little south of Church Street. And so, there's a lighting plan, and there are parking changes and sidewalk improvements, and so there's, that's been done, and I'm trying to remember if the source of the funding for that was all local, or whether or not we managed to get a grant for some of it. But depending on where you are in the process, the original plan update, the 2006 plan update, was funded using a grant and local funds. So, yeah, it depends on if you're going for the engineering stuff, and then you would normally be going for things like enhancement funds, or the transportation, agency of transportation funds for bike paths and things like that, but...
So, how did Brandon favor theirs?
It's a good question. I'm not, I'm not sure how Brandon did.
So, better connections?
Brandon has always owned that section of road, so that's one thing that's, that has been in their favor. been in their favor. When I worked in Rutland, I worked in Rutland for, for about eight years and Brandon was a, was an outlier because they actually owned the road as it passed through the village.
Woduski too.
How did they, how did they do theirs?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure about Woduski, but I do know that Brandon had owned the road.
So I guess that's what I'm suggesting, you know, some kind of way to look into what it would take to own, you know, that part of Route Seven. And, and this is more than, I mean, we, we've talked about a-
Class one highway status.
Yeah, yeah. We've talked about a southern gateway, but it seems like we can get through a southern gateway, but once we get here to the village, there's nothing there, you know, so the, why not make the, the gateway be the village itself?
The little gateway idea was just out here. So when we talk about the southern gateway and that area from the top of the hill down to Ridgefield, that was the second southern gateway. So the gateways that were envisioned in the two thousand and six study were basically right out here and they, just this side of the bridge, I think there was one on Falls Road, I think there was a small one on Harbor Road. So they were closer to the village. They were more doing what you're thinking or what you've seen done in Burlington.
Yeah, yeah, I guess so. I'm thinking like to actually make the village something.
That was never funded or it was, it was just abandoned?
What was the-
Well, the, the plan came up with the concepts and there were a lot of different projects, potential projects that were listed in it and the one that moved forward first but hasn't gone any further is this area that I mentioned from the intersection down to Church Street where there were the engineering plans put together for lighting, sidewalk improvements and streetscape.
Because even started there, starting there, that would be-
Yeah, so-
Something I think would be beneficial.
And actually, that project that I'm referring to is in the capital plan. I think it's in for about a million bucks. So there is, there is a village-related, you know, kind of quality of life and, and economic benefit investment already shown. That's, so, let's see, I mean, I assume it's still there, maybe Peter took it up finally. It was in the last one, but it may be gone now. There used to be an item in the public works section.
There's one that says road and roads and bike paths, public works.
Yeah, this is-
That's a separate, that's a separate idea.
That's one small part of what came out of this more recent study. But if we, if we had the capital improvement plan from last year as it was approved, it would still have a line in it for about a million bucks for this village streetscape improvement. And so maybe, maybe as a group, the commission wants to say, well, now wait a minute, slow down. Before we get rid of that million dollars and put it someplace else entirely, maybe it ought to stay in here but be morphed into something different. One of the questions I'd always had in my mind since Paul Boni left was there wasn't really a champion, who was the champion for that project? Because Paul was really the person who was most, most interested in it.
You know, I, I, as much as I want to do that and think and would like to, I don't think that this is necessarily the best way to move that forward as a priority, this, this vehicle of the capital improvement plan. So a couple of things, for, for a couple of reasons. Well, since two thousand and six, there's been a lot more interest in bicycling and, as, as a way of getting around and I, my recollection is that that plan does not really integrate bicycling in with, with the improvements. And that's not to say that they necessarily, the best place for that would be on the street because I, I am in favor of having on-street parking and street trees and that's, that can really add to the traffic calming. But I, I think there needs to be some sort of vision for where, how bicycles can get around more safely.
I, I guess I don't want to debate too much about it, but the two thousand and plan, six plan update did incorporate bike lanes. A lot of the things that the village safety group came to advocate for, I was constantly telling them, go back because whatever it is you're talking about, it's already in that two thousand and six plan. The problem had been that the two thousand and six plan hadn't really been picked up and acted upon. But at least there is some accommodation. It could be better, but-
Yeah, so I-
Or updated.
Might be updated, yeah. Your technologies.
Yeah, just, you know, I, I think it requires, you know, some eyes on it to make sure that it's, you know, reflective of current practices and ideas. But the other thing is that, you know, we just had an economic development summit and, you know, one of the focuses was how to leverage opportunities in the village, all over the town, but particularly in the village. And so, you know, I, I think that, I'm just concerned about looking at this with too narrow a focus. You know, it seems like economic development, class one highway status, improvements to the streetscape, these things are all very interrelated. So I, I think it could be helpful to sort of expand on this category. I'm not sure how you do that or if this is at all a vehicle for, for doing that, but I mean, can, is there any kind of visioning and analysis? Does that fall under the category of a study? Do you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think it does, but-
Cost benefit analysis? I don't know, you know, just something, we, we need to get people to buy into this and that's how you get support for moving something like this forward.
Yeah, and as we've seen, there are these outliers. It doesn't mean that the select board couldn't be convinced to put a more study-type project in the CIP. It's just not been their tradition and I think Peter groans a little bit, but maybe you could convince them to do it.
The alternative would say, okay, we want to put in a three million line, three million dollar line item to revitalize downtown and then people can say, oh, that's crazy, what's the real number? Well, we need a study. I mean, and that's why I was appreciative of asking that question because I, thinking through similar things, I, I'm just not, I, I know that it's not a, a traditional thing to have plans and studies be in the capital improvement plan, but if, and I'm not an expert in the grant world, if having something like that in there shows from a town perspective to a potential grant giver that, okay, well, the town is, is actually, they've, they're thinking about this, they have this, there's a better chance that something's going to happen if I invest in this area. It would be beneficial to have it there. And then the next backup would be to try and lobby the select board to make an official statement that yes, we are interested in this so we could rely on that. But I feel like that would just, I mean, either way, it clouds, it's them needing to do something.
From what you're saying, you need to-
Or broadly define a project revitalizing Falls Road or, and then attach a study to it, that, that's how.
So where do you-
Or attach a, a, an updated of-
Usually the capital plan items are things that have had a study. I mean, that's the conventional. You'd have a, you have a comp plan, say something, there's a need. Out of that comes a study and maybe it's a study that costs so much that you have to go get funding for it, but be as it may. After you've done the study, the study has said, the general solution to this problem is to fix Falls Road in the following manner. Then you put it in the capital plan. That's generally how it works, but doesn't have to be that way.
I don't remember where I was going with that. Now you could tell here, where, how did the studies, what's the genesis from them? You know, they, they summon-
Well, the plan, so, so, I mean, part of my thought-
Where's the seed come from? Exactly, and then, I mean, I get, I totally, as a finance guy, I totally get why you wouldn't put a study in a capital plan. Capital is stuff, right? It's hard stuff. So I, I get that, but I don't understand where they do get funded.
But these got, there must be a budget for expenses or-
So one of the things I was kind of biting my tongue about when Don was here was to jump ahead to the end of the agenda where we would be talking, I was going to be talking a little bit more about the, the budget itself, which is the main focus of this meeting on the eleventh. The main focus of the meeting on the eleventh is the amount of money that will be spent in the upcoming fiscal year. It's not looking the full six years. And traditionally, what has happened is that I have put into the planning and zoning budget, an amount of money that would be a bit more than the match, the minimum match for some kind of generic project. Sometimes we know, but sometimes we don't know for sure. And, and so I have said, my budget includes a five thousand dollar amount as the match for what we call the municipal planning grant program funds.
Got it.
And that would be used to leverage, say, twenty-two to twenty-five thousand dollars. And so these things get done, if we put in an application and we get it, and then we can, then we can do the study. And what ends up happening is that it's easier to ask for five or six thousand as match than it is to ask for thirty thousand.
Sure.
The downside is, is that if you don't get your grant approved, then you're sitting on that money and somebody else spends it or it goes to whatever.
Sure.
Now, sometimes there's a need that's great enough and the select board will say, no, we're going to put in, and I'm, I'm wondering whether or not as part of this two thousand and six study, because Chris Neamy, I believe, was on the select board at the time and I think that he, he pushed the idea of something in excess of twenty thousand dollars towards this. So there are times when the town will, will do it. And when you use all local funds, then you don't have to worry about the grant not being approved.
Right, right.
There are some very clear passing-
In the plan that are in the, that are in our packet, which address what you're asking about, right? Which is to say there's upper Falls Road improvements, improving accessibility on Falls Road from Route Seven intersection, redesigning and reconstructing Upper Falls Road, Route Seven along the triangular village green, Church Street, it's described in the village plan update, streetscape improvements, and then on the next page in village gateways, visually differentiate the village from surrounding areas, create, celebrate as a special space. I mean, this, the step is all-
That last one is, but the, the other ones are all Falls Road.
But it's-
Nothing is like other-
In the, in the triangle at the green, I mean, all that stuff is-
Yeah.
In my view. I mean, I, I see the, I see the villages as I drive from Bacon Drive north through Seven, do you know what I mean? So I, my view of the village has a lot to do with the, the intersection of IGA and, and the Shelburne Country Store and this kind of thing, which is just kind of crazy upside down world in my view. But whatever, it's, it's, it's all referenced there in the plan. So to the, the point that you're bringing it up, I mean, there's a, there's a clear line for here's what's in the plan and so the question then becomes, does this require a study to do more work on this and, you know, kind of wrap around a, a more formal plan? Here's what needs to happen and here, over how many years? And here's the money that it takes to do that. So the question then for us is, well, do we advocate for putting twenty thousand dollars into next year's budget or do we advocate for putting some small number of hundreds of thousands of dollars or millions of dollars into the capital plan, right?
So this capital plan statements, here's what you were saying, that the storyline behind each item, is that what, I don't think you use storyline, but-
Well, Peter does a narrative document that goes along with the CIP, the table.
So like, take for example this number five here, this, this, despite its location on primary north side highway, blah, blah, blah. Does that, does that number five correspond to a line item five in, in the capital plan or is just a number?
These are from the town.
Okay.
They don't.
I mean, I'm, I've been in, somebody made a statement, it's a flourishing pedestrian-centric village. I don't know if they've seen other villages, but, I mean, I, I, there's no way, Michelle, I mean, I love this town, I live here, but, you know, it's not a pedestrian-centric village, let's be honest here.
Improvements can certainly be, it's been, it's been a big topic and I think that's- This is a good discussion because I'm curious as well. I mean, with the, after, after hearing the discussion at the select board meeting, this next budget and the year after that, given some large bonds that are coming due, are they're going to be tight years? So the idea, and especially considering that the open space plan wasn't fully funded last year, I'd almost want to make sure that something like that is fully funded and then focus on whatever we can do to get studies or, whatever the best mechanism is to secure a grant to help us get more foundational information to move forward versus asking for additional money in the budget beyond what you normally do to try and hit a match. I mean, it'd be great if we could get it. I just, that discussion struck me as there's a lot of big ticket items and we're already looking at some decent increases, so.
Yeah, and I didn't add that there was, last year, things were so tight that the match amount for the grant wasn't included, so it's not, it's not there because things were that tight.
Yeah, it is something and I, I was, I don't know if it made it into one of these, but didn't we have a recommended action to investigate taking on Route Seven?
Yes, there is, there is a statement that has to do with doing, I, I took it as more detailed analysis than what Lucy did.
Yeah, so that is something that we have in the plan and-
In addition to the, the stuff you pointed out, yeah, that all is, is mentioned, is already like established that that's what we're going for as a, as a planning body. But the, the idea of, that you threw out of, like, saying, okay, well, given what you're just saying, that the next couple of years, bonds are being paid off and stuff like that, so that's, you know, the, the number or the, the dollars aren't quite there yet, do we go ahead and ask for like three years from now, that three million dollars?
Right.
That's kind of unfounded by any, any number crunching or physical planning that's actually been done, just to get a number in the, in the slot there so that we can then use it for stuff? Or, or do we do, do a study somehow and, and then get some kind of a number together to, to make things happen that, that might create this flourishing pedestrian center that were, I think it was, I think it was put in there in the town plan as a hope.
It wasn't more aspirational, yeah. Yeah, definitely. So, so one of the things that I, I'm wondering about as I read through this is how compatible are the public works standards, existing or proposed, going to be with all of this placemaking that is envisioned here? I'm suspecting not at all or, or in very limited ways. For example, you know, I, I'm not under the impression that street trees are currently allowed in, on the town streets in, in, in the right of way, for example.
There's a bit of a conflict because the subdivision brings call for street trees and the public works specifications want them out of there.
Right, and so the public works standards are being revised right now and my understanding is they're just doing a cut and paste job from Essex, which does, is not exactly a center of enlightened public work standards, so probably going to get same, you know, slightly less crappy public work standards. And they're certainly not going to, what is that? Shelburne Village is a flourishing pedestrian-centric village. I, I doubt they're going to support any of those goals. So that's like a whole other thing that we need to be addressing. And, you know, I don't know if there's money, if the, if the CIP is a place where we can say, we need somebody who knows what they're doing to come and work with us on developing public works standards.
Yeah, I think it's the same question as, would you consider a study as something that could be in a capital program? And if they made, if they just wanted to do it, they could do it. If they were resistant to doing it, they would use that as an excuse. The thing I can tell you as well is that we've, we've explored whether or not we could get funding through the regional planning commission to help do this and I've tried several different arguments and they've consistently told me that the feds won't, they won't do it. And so while the feds will pay money to do a study that is kind of like the village plan, they won't, they won't help a community pay for the updating of its public work specifications, which is annoying.
Just make it all about stormwater and they should do it, right?
As part of stormwater.
Just make it all about stormwater. They're, they're transect oriented, they're all to support stormwater and actually that will help lower our MS four liabilities because now we're looking at this sort of distributed model that's all really site-specific and yet we, you know, we still have a hundred and twenty foot wide pave-to-pave gutter curb, you know, cul-de-sacs going in.
Yeah, I, I think Chris might be able to answer the question about whether or not any of the funds that he tends to go after could be used to update a part of it at least.
least. When they come in December, he may be able to tell us. I'm not sure that A&R, as an example, would underwrite the cost of updating all of the public specs, but they may underwrite the cost of some of it.
Well, some would be a start.
And as far as that process goes, because this is part of, I mean, three and a half years in now, things, some things are starting to make sense, with all the various documents and how they fit together. But, I mean, it's a good point with public works, we can do all this work in one area, and if the public works standards don't support it, then--
Oh, yeah.
There's just going to be butt in heads at some point. So since those are--
You know, just, I just did a quick little Google comparison, looking at Google Earth, older subdivisions and what that looked like visually, and then with some little measurements that I did using Google Earth versus more recent ones. And, you know, we used to make cul-de-sacs that were, I mean, they're still cul-de-sacs, but at least they were 60 feet wide on average. Now they're twice the size, you know? There was this change that happened. We had the 30-foot, 5-foot wide streets and crazy stuff, you know?
And some of that's driven by the equipment that we choose to buy.
Right, right. I mean, I have to say, every time they're talking about getting a new fire truck, I'm always, I try to attend those meetings and say, have you thought about this? Have you thought about this? Because, you know, we're just designing for, you know, school buses that nobody uses, and fire trucks, you know? I mean, it's, we're making a built environment that accommodates these things, and it doesn't support livability. It certainly contributes to our stormwater liabilities.
So, well, I imagine that the public works standard discussions, I imagine at some point, there's, is there public input there, or is that just the department doing its thing?
It's not a terribly public process. The plan does have language in it. Just as a reminder, the plan has language in it, in I think two or three places, stressing the importance of updating the public work specifications, so that they do a better job recognizing some of these things that we're talking about. But it's, generally speaking, an internal document. It does get approved by the select board, because it is a policy. So at some point, it would be presented to the select board at a meeting, presumably with a recommendation from the manager to adopt it.
Yeah, I just wonder if the, if that process might be open to having some input from these discussions, or from a planning commission perspective, just to ensure that we don't, if nothing else, at the end of the day, so that when it goes up for the select board review, and then there's people that go up and say, these are the reasons this is bad, and if we had had this discussion months ago, there could have been a lot more time to see it. Just in the interest of efficiency.
Yeah. Well, I've had conversations with some folks about this. The process is one that's just kind of going along slowly. It stops at times because of other things, and picks back up again. These are meetings of public work staff, they tend to be Monday, rather, Wednesday mornings, two times, or one or two times a month. But the next one is probably not going to happen until December, I think Revy said. But, you know, I don't believe there's any way a member of the public would be excluded from it. And I think that, again, given the language that's in the plan that the select board adopted, it would make absolute sense for that to happen.
Yeah, and again, I'm not, I'm not looking at this from a, you know, let's go in and flip tables, and how are you not considering this? It's more the idea of, to your point, with the width of streets, and it's in order to allow certain equipment to make it through. All sides have their reasons for needing to do things, but all sides don't necessarily understand the variables that are going to be impacted if they just go based on what they know.
Yeah. Just another important point to understand is that the way the public works specs have been applied in the past, is they govern what happens when a facility is built, and that facility is going to be passed on to the town to own. So it's a subset of all of the stuff that gets built. There are driveways, and commercial drives, and small private streets, that don't follow any of the stuff in the public work specs, because the public work spec says they are written right now, focused on things that the town is going to own. So, a couple of things. Some communities say, if you're building this type of facility, regardless of whether or not it's public or private, you have to build it in a particular way. So that's something that could happen, and I think it could be a recommendation. The other thing is that some of the concerns I hear people express are not so much in public works specifications, as they are just public works practices. And I think that's another area where the community has, you know, maybe started to get involved and recommend things. And I think will be, there will be a time when, just in the same way that there's this discussion going on right now about the town's policies regarding wildlife, you know, how do town staff deal with wildlife, it's going to result in a policy. How we maintain our roads, not how we build new roads, not how developers build new roads, how the town itself maintains its roads is something that policies will be refined about. So it doesn't necessarily have to be just the public work specs, it could be some sibling document that are called something else.
Good question. You mentioned the Regional Planning Commission? Is that the county?
It's, it covers the county. It's not county government. It is, it's something else that exists in Vermont, that has different, it has a complex mandate, gets funding from different sources, but they have resources and expertise and work on a lot of things.
But they're in, like, the northwest region of--
No, 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 they cover shit in county. So there are, there are 10 or 12 of them in Vermont still. One covers three counties--
Okay.
And one is as small as 10, 10 or 11 towns.
Okay.
So to go back to how we, like, the disconnect between what we're thinking of for, you know, with the town plan of revitalizing the village, for an example, what is the mechanism? Do we need a town manager to take this, you know, whatever project we want to pursue, the town manager takes it up and pushes it through the select board? What's the mechanism? I still don't get the disconnect, there's a disconnect between what we're talking about here with all this stuff that we're recommending, and actually having anybody that gets it done. And the money to get it done.
So this goes, one way to look at this would be to go back to something that Dean mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, which is the unified bylaw. And that is an opportunity to kind of integrate some of this stuff a little more. Because right now, everything is in these kind of different compartments, the way our ordinance is set up. So we have, you know, there's our vision document, the town plan, which I think is, you know, pretty good at this point. And then we have, you know, the delivery system is the ordinance, and it's pretty bad in a lot of ways. And, you know, there's stuff that's going on, subdivision regulations, and the zoning is, the only place where there's any attempt at kind of integrating everything is in the form-based zoning overlay district, you know, where we talk about, and you can just look at it on the table of contents, where everything is kind of, you know, there's the vision of place that's supposed to emerge is, you know, there's, it's alluded to in the table of contents, that there is a vision of place that's supposed to emerge. And that's the only, that's the only part right now of the ordinance where we have anything like that. So it's kind of like not a huge surprise that the right hand has no idea what the left hand is doing, and there's all of this inefficiency.
Difficult government.
Yeah.
So Stephen, different people can be the leaders that make something happen. So, yeah, it might be a town manager, but then again, a town manager might be here long enough to get something identified as a problem, to get a solution identified, and we know how much it's going to cost, and we get it in a queue for the state to do something, and then they're gone. They might never see it. So there's just that to consider. Some of these things take a long time to develop. And sometimes it's committees. The idea of a pedestrian path along Webster Road goes back to about 1991, idea of connecting the village with the northern neighborhoods. And it got serious in 2004, when there was the recognition that we want to go after big dollars from the state to build it. So this type of study was done, and then we got the funds eventually in 2007, 2008, and then it finally got built. But that was really something that a committee and people in the community led the charge on. There were people in the community who were instrumental in convincing the select board to bond for some of those expenses. So it depends on, you know, it could be individual, could be a group, it could be a neighborhood.
But it can't be the planning commission?
Sure, I mean--
Can we say--
I think it can be. I think that the things that Peter is talking about has to do with how individual buildings within the village center will be renovated, or, you know, had developed. But the things that you're talking about, sort of streetscape stuff, how the road is designed, how people move in and out of parking areas, I mean, that can also be, come out of something that Shelburne pays for, or applies for grants to help to pay for. This sort of laundry list of activities that I kind of rattled off that's in the plan, I mean, it could be our job to, or a task that we take on, to really design a scope of work out of this. Say, if we take all these different things that have to do with Falls Road and the village, and Route 7 as it goes through the village, and put them together into a single scope of work, right?
It's comprehensive, yeah.
How do we take all these pieces and put it together that says, let's do this project, let's create a design, you know, this, sorry to be so flaky here, let's create a project that just looks at all these different pieces and lays out an implementation plan over the course of X many years, and how many dollars would it take to get there? Do you know what I mean? I mean, so, no town manager is going to take this list of stuff in its current format and take the ball and run with it, I don't think. But this is a plan, right? It is, yeah. So what you do-- But we need to kind of, we need to kind of move it forward to those next steps.
But normally, there's a plan, there's an action plan and the implementation, but this is written, but there's no names attached to it, or deadlines, or--
And the plan is 100 pages long.
There are recommendations in the plan for how to start to implement some of it. And two of them are to pursue a unified bylaw, which I was just describing, and the second is to consider form-based zoning for the entire town, to expand. And one of the reasons that we pursued the zoning, and the way that we did in the Route 7 corridor, was with the idea that it could serve as a sort of template for expanding to other areas of the town, sort of trying it out there first. And of course, it only exists as an optional overlay at the moment. But, you know, the seed of potential is theoretically there. So that would be, you know, transect-based zoning is a way to provide the framework that all of this stuff can hang from.
Form-based zoning for the area--
That we made form-based zoning for, the given is Route 7 is a highway.
Right.
And what, we can make form-based zoning in the village, too, but still, the given that we have to deal with is that highway. And so, isn't there, I would like to think that there was some way we could change the highway, at least in one area where it's important to do so, to make the village, and not have to be reacting to the highway that's already there and built and done, and, you know--
Totally understand. The part of the problem is that the kind of auto-centricity is the default understanding of how everything works. And so, you know, it manifests in the Route 7 corridor in the worst possible way, in my opinion, but it's still very manifest in the village, which I think is what you're responding to. The village could be so much more if we, I mean, what did you say? I wrote it down, it was so compelling. It doesn't spell village.
It doesn't spell village.
It doesn't spell village. Well, part of the, I would argue that one of the reasons that is, is because we are so kind of, all sort of like brainwashed with this kind of auto-centricity type of, and that extends to public works, that do not even allow street trees to be planted on our town streets. I mean, that's, to me, it's unthinkable.
I thought it was because of the roots and the structure to--
Who cares? Amazing places all over the, all high-quality places feature street trees, all high-quality urban centers.
But this big debate at Boulder Hill about that, some people did that, and they're there still, the trees.
I mean, it's--
They got away with it.
You know, it's for the convenience of snow plowing, it's for the convenience of moving automobiles. The priorities are all through the lens of what works for, you know, cars, and the people who, for whom, you know, that is the paramount thing. And I think we're finally at a point where we have, you know, enough people starting to say, I don't want to live that way anymore, and we should not have that, in particular, in our village. And so, but we have to, we've got to calibrate the public work standards to the places that we want to have. And right now, we've got auto-centric public work standards being slapped on to everywhere. I don't know if you've noticed, but--
They haven't caught up to--
They haven't. So when you go, okay, so, you know, we have Route 7 through the village, too many trucks, all that, right?
But we can't change that.
No, I understand.
50,000 truck cars and trucks go through the village, or whatever the number is, you probably know--
It's not 50.
It's not us, it's not all of us--
Seems that way, like--
Doing that.
For a half hour or night.
It's all of those people from other places, like Alaska and California and Connecticut, they're all driving through here. We can't change their behavior. They're going to drive a car, and they should be able to drive a car. It's a major auto route.
But, so, okay, a number of years ago, there was a discussion about upgrading the intersection at Harbor Road and Falls Road. And, you know, there was practically--
There's a study, and there's a design.
Right, and there was practically a mutiny as a result. I mean, it was, it was quite inflamed, the reaction among people.
There's a preferred alternative. It didn't die the death that another project did, where there was no preferred alternative. There's a preferred alternative. There was an adjustment for some parking near cabins.
Yeah, Shelburne Farm, it's right here.
But my point is, if you, if you look on Google Earth, it shows really clearly, if you look at the Route 7 through the village, it's, you know, it is what it is. But if you look at Harrington Village, which was a new development that was just put in, in the village a few years ago, the width of that minor road from, that is a dead end, right, that comes off of Route 7, is wider than the built, what's there built on Route 7. I mean, that's, that's what I mean by public works standards that are completely out of whack with place.
But that's for new roads, that's for new roads, new development.
I guess I'm talking about a road, a highway, that's already like sitting right here, and whether we can change it to make it more human-scaled and pedestrian-friendly. And it may come down to public works eventually, because if we can get the town to take over Route 7 and maintain that section of it, then of course, yes, public works will get kicked in, because that's the agency, or that's the group that's going to have to, like, make sure it's working. But the main thing that, like, the first step to that seems like we have to be able to do something to it, and then talk about what we're doing to it, to make it, to make it a village, to make this a village.
There are a lot of moving parts. I mean, especially since the public works specs are being revamped now, I think that that's an opportunity to at least try and have some input into that conversation, or to at least show, hey, here are things that are in the town plan. There's a lot of support from the select board toward the town plan. Quick comment on the, yes, government gets bloated and that sort of thing, but specifically, and because I've been looking at this stuff, when you think about our zoning regs, they came into place in the early 60s, and we've had boards and commissions over the last many decades that are continuously changing over. So to your example with that village plan from 2006, and it was Paul who was really spearheading that, but then he left, and there was no longer that, that big push behind it. So these sorts of things happen, and that's why when we have, like, somebody might come to us with a regulation that doesn't make sense, and that's why I welcome people, hey, if something doesn't make sense, come talk to us, because things can be changed. But we need to look at that change within the greater context, and look for opportunities to make things better. So all of this, it's more that there are just various groups doing different things. A lot of those groups are volunteer-based, which, there's finite amount of time that goes into that. So it's really just making sure that there's broad awareness. And I do think that there is, I mean, I would hope there's an opportunity with the public works specs discussion to-- is, I mean, I would hope there's an opportunity with the Public Works specs discussion to say, hey, here are some of the discussions we're having. I think we could probably do ourselves a favor by making sure that the, the Route Seven discussion and just the village improvement in general is on a future agenda, so that we can show, hey, we're, we're really, this is something that we're starting to look at, we really want, we've had the discussions in the past, but we want to start figuring out what we'll bring tangible change about, like, what do we really need to do if we're serious about this? Because we, we have talked about a lot of this stuff over the last few years.
It is something you see in a lot of towns around this country, around other countries as well. You see a lot of business Route Sevens, you know, that go around the town. I mean, has this ever been studied here many years ago?
Bypasses.
Mm-hmm, bypass, yeah.
Yeah, the last study of a bypass around Shelburne, I think, was done in the seventies. The agency of transportation, they're very expensive, they have all kinds of red tape that go along with them, and you have things like the Cirque Highway, which is essentially a bypass around Burlington. You know, the senator at the time, Stafford, got fifty million dollars, and I don't remember, remember what year, and people thought fifty million dollars was going to pay for the whole thing, and it paid for part of one part. The, because they're expensive, the agency of transportation probably fifteen or twenty years ago now declared that they weren't going to be taking on any new ones, they were going to finish the ones that were, had been in design, so there's one in Morrisville, Bennington, and I'm trying to think where else. But places like Middlebury that had been talking about them for many, many years, they basically had to, or they understood that, you know, until there's a new paradigm, there won't be any more bypasses.
Okay. Where do you put it? I guess that's...
That's the other thing, right? Yeah. You could always, you can always find a way, I suppose.
I think the plan was, you know, something that was going to go through what would have been Bostwick's land at, at the time.
Wow.
So, so again, I guess the, I agree that we should be showing up at these staff meetings on Wednesday AM at Public Works to...
Go back, Kate.
Yeah, I totally agree.
I did.
The, the reason I'm bringing up the, the, just the center and Route Seven, is that we're looking, it, it was in relation to the budget, and looking at this year's budget and next year's, next year's, and having to review it and make comments on it. And so, that's why I bring it up, because that's something that will cost money if it's ever done, and we don't know if we even want to do it, but that's why I was thinking in terms of money for a study, and if it can't be, if a study can't be put in a budget, then where does the, the money come from for that study? And, and if it's already in for one line item, like you pointed out, Neil, the pedestrian improvements as a study for twenty-five or thirty-five thousand dollars or something, why can't we put in money for a study as a suggestion and ask for that, for the select board to put it in this year's or next year's or next year's, just so that it's, there's something in there for a study to look at it? Yeah, that's, that's alive.
Yeah, something, something to keep in mind is that the Village Pedestrian Safety Group has, I think there's overlapping interests, at least as far as the stuff you're talking about, pedestrian mobility. They, I know I have forwarded their, their request to the select board, to the members of the PATHS Committee, but I didn't forward them to you, and I can do that, so you'll get a sense of what it is they're asking for. I believe that they're going to be asking for an increase from a ten thousand, kind of generic, to deal with problems, to bump that to fifteen thousand. So it's not a lot of money that they're looking for, and I think they have specific improvements in mind, so like, they were pushing the...
But still dodging trucks and cars, and, you know, it's, they're, they're improvements, but they're not long-term.
They're not major things, no, no, but they, but they had spot improvements in mind that, you know, included the crosswalk near the, near the post office, the pulling out some of the pavement along Falls Road, the restriping, those sorts of things. And so I'm not, I'm not remembering what the things that they have in mind for next year are, but...
The fifteen thousand is infrastructure, not the plan.
Right, it's infrastructure, and they've come up with their ideas by looking around at some of these earlier studies, talking to people, and coming up with their project ideas. And so, I guess that's the question, is do you need to do a big study to do that, or can it be done without doing a big study?
It's, it's a big thing. It's a, I can't imagine not doing a study when we don't even know the cost of taking over a section of Route Seven. That's, that's not like putting in a crosswalk or taking out some pavement, that's, we can't guess what it would...
But didn't you say that Lucy had done some, some, you know, back-of-the-envelope estimates on that?
Well, Lucy had done some calculations of the costs and benefits related to converting a US seven from state-owned, state-controlled to local control. That's one piece of it, but I don't think that's the only piece. What I'm hearing are things that people would like to see improvements made, and, and those improvements could be made even if the town doesn't control it. I mean, depending on what they are. I mean, we're not going to make it go down to one lane or something like that, but we weren't, we wouldn't do that even if we controlled it. It's still going to need to carry the traffic that it's, some, some, same order of magnitude.
So do we have to go and put on that?
But it could be prettier, it could be, you know, improved bicycle lanes, you know...
Yeah, I mean, if we, if, if the town doesn't control that section of Route Seven, can we still have an impact on what gets done on Route Seven, or does the state say?
Sure, I mean, the town, this...
You know, like, trees, no, crosswalk, no, et cetera, et cetera, no.
Or safe bicycle lane, maybe.
This, this, this intersection report that was done, there was a lot of town involvement in it, and a, a project like this wouldn't be done over the objections of the town. So I think that the consultants were pretty sensitive to Shelburne officialdom. Now, that doesn't mean that everyone is going to be happy about every little piece, and, you know, Kevin, you know, he made it known that he was concerned about what the original idea was for parking, and some things got changed. But the town isn't shut out. It, yeah, it's not shut out, even if it doesn't own it. The problem is paying for these things.
Yeah, well, as I recall that, I mean, wasn't that in order to alleviate traffic congestion?
Well, it is, this...
Not, not to make the village nicer, it was like, to get that traffic light to work better.
So this is trying to address, address traffic condition, but it, but it was also doing things that would benefit pedestrians and cyclists as well. I mean, it's not, I mean, the agency of transportation has come a long, has come a long way, and they do think about all the modes that are using our transportation system.
So what happened to that, just out of...
Well, it's a project that is, is included in a list as, because the town has asked for it to be on this list, I won't go into the details, but there is really no funding to back it up yet. So it's a project waiting a suitor, basically, with money, or some federal program that would be a good match for this, so that the project could move forward. But right now, other projects in Vermont are out competing it.
So what is this, what is the recommendation in this report?
So it would, it would upgrade the signals, that basically, one of the things it's going to do would be to increase the, you know, so if you're turning left on Harbor, you're coming north, there's a limited amount of storage, by that I mean, you have your own lane, not the striped yellow area, that'll hold three, four cars?
It's the same, it's the same turning left.
Going south.
But everybody, I mean, so the, so the design would be to extend that lane, so there's more storage, which frees things up, you don't have people who are turning left holding up the people that are going through and vice versa. So those are, that's just one small piece of it. And it does also, I'm thinking, it had some recommendations for this intersection down here, the crosswalk, it's been a long enough now that I'm not remembering all the details.
But it really is just rejiggering the intersection.
It was, yeah, it was to make this intersection flow better, and yes, this is the dilemma. If you make cars, make it possible for cars to go faster, it becomes more hazardous for pedestrians unless you, you just tightly regulate it and you have a lot of pedestrian controls as well, and then it's a balancing act.
See, this is why I think we need to go back, take a step backwards, and if we really want a walkable village, then we could end up with less traffic in the village. We're going, as you said, we're going to have the, the through traffic is going to always be there, but, you know, some of that is anticipated to shift to rail in the coming years. And, and also, right now, we have our, our main, I remember this being brought out when we were having those hearings on this project, the, the, the main travel, traffic snarls are very much associated with people bringing their children to school, the pick-up and drop-off. And so, you know, we have a situation where a lot of people, for a variety of reasons, you know, their children are either not taking the bus, and they're certainly not getting to school on their own two feet. And, you know, one of the things that I think would be an opportunity to leverage would be to work with, with the, the school, maybe the PATHS Committee and the school could work together on opportunities to, now that there's that connecting path between, for example, the, the boat launch and Shelburne Bay Park, there's a very safe way to get onto the crosswalk that then leads right to the school. You know, could, could that be something that could be encouraged? You know, they don't have those walk-to-school, bike-to-school days anymore, because for some issue related to liability, apparently. I mean, it seems like, can that barrier not be overcome?
That actually came up at the select board meeting as well, the utilization of buses and how they're empty.
Yeah.
And it's great that these topics are bubbling up, and I do think that the planning commission could have a great role in it. I, I love this conversation, and I don't want to cut it short, but we started with more time and we're already over. What I would like to do before going on to the next one, though, and I really do appreciate this discussion, and I would, I, I think that there is value in getting this topic specifically onto a near-term agenda, just to start understanding what studies have been done and start getting to think of what we might be looking for in the future. As far as a SIP summary, though, because I think what the output of this is, would be to be a statement that the planning commission would contribute to the process, saying this is what we are viewing as priorities.
I, I think the more you can do on the front end, the more helpful it will be to the select board. You still will be given a copy of the hearing draft when it's available.
Right, but just as...
But if you can steer it by making a set of recommendations.
Yeah, and my, just high level from this discussion and from these notes in here, I would say the key points would be, first, we would advocate for fully funding the open space fund allocation, which got cut a little bit last year. Anything supporting bike and ped, or as a general term, connectivity in town?
And safety.
Yeah, that's, that would be in there as well. And the bike ped, there are, there are some projects in there, there was also a line item for, say, trail equipment. And if we're going to be encouraging walkability in bikes and that sort of thing, it would make sense that the town has the equipment to be able to, to support it effectively. Stormwater in general, any, any projects that are helping to lower those future liabilities and address the current ones. Side note...
Sorry, just a quick question on that, because I've heard that in a few meetings, and I haven't had the, you know, the, the luck of having attended a lot of these meetings before, so explain to me just in a nutshell what the stormwater liability is about, and I know what stormwaters are, I know what liabilities are, but how did, how does the town have stormwater liabilities?
Because we own roads, and we have ditches along those roads, and there's, there's runoff from the roads that have pollutants in them, so there's a federal-level structure that comes into play that regulates what we end up calling MS4s, municipals' stormwater systems, blah, blah, blah. And so we are not just a party that regulates developers, because we own something that generates stormwater, we are a reg, we're regulated, and so we have to apply for and get permits. So the liability that we are talking about is the things that we have to do to fulfill our obligations under those permits. And so there's federal permit requirement...
So there, there are contaminants in the stormwater that, that, that need to be treated, or need to be...
The, the system isn't set up so that it's like doing water sampling.
Or it would just exist and we'd just pay a fine, right?
It's, it's, no, it's not a matter of just paying fines.
Ouch.
So, so think of it as being more oriented towards flow than, at least when we're talking about stormwater, more oriented towards flow than it is the chemical composition of the water. When we're talking about lakes and the receiving bodies, it's a separate question, because we have to deal with things like phosphorus, and maybe some day nitrogen, and maybe salt in Lake Champlain. But for stormwater, it's principally the volume, and you, you want to bring the peaks down, and you want the times when it's basically not running at all, you want to try to have a minimum flow in our streams. That's the simplest way of describing it. And so these investments, these obligations that we have, are the result of studies that have shown where it would be the most cost-effective to make improvements that would bring down the peaks, but keep these minimum flows going.
So it's more about flows and pipes and moving the water away from...
Well, we have these peaks because historically we've developed, and the, the mindset has been, I want to get the water off my property, and so I'm going to put a pipe, and I'm going to put the pipe, and it's going to end at the town's property, and then the town will have to deal with it. And so that's part of what we end up doing, is we are managing water that comes from private properties. But we're trying to bring down those peaks, and the way that you do it is to, you know, disconnect the water so it doesn't enter our system, or you want to detain it so that sediments settle out, nutrients are often attached to those, settling those out, the water goes out, and it's...
So the liability is infrastructure, then, or it's...
Well, we have to...
Well, and actually, because this, this could really get a little...
No, no, okay.
And stormwater is on our next agenda.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And we're going to have some speakers come in, so I think a lot of that, bring your questions, because that's...
I will. And I, I'm just curious as, as to, if it's a federal mandate, then, because I know that Vermont's probably applying it to the latter, as...
We're delegated, so it is something that is...
Compared to other parts of the country, which probably doesn't...
And but there are also, in addition to the federal requirements, state requirements, and so the state has adopted rules that it can adopt, doesn't...
Okay.
Because so much of this happens in, the, the place where this is all regulated is, is the, the, the public rights of way, the, the road corridors, this is why the public work standards are so important, and why, you know, continuing with our paving from, you know, A to Z practices is just, you know, really counterproductive.
Yeah, I think we have an opportunity to bring a lot of those discussions together, so it's, it's good to hear that there's similar thinking. So the, yeah, open space, connectivity, stormwater, and then something to address a village improvement, like streetscape improvements, revisiting studies, whatever it was that could get us to a point where we can actually start doing something or getting a foundation in place. And there would need to be a fair amount of wordsmithing and stuff, but those are the key highlights that I'm hearing from this.
Yeah, all those...
Great to me.
So, in, following up on the unified plan piece...
So the unified document...
CIP?
No, the zoning regulations and stuff, these regulations and form-based zoning and all that. Doing that, to, to get Shelburne to there, that's presumably going to require a consultant to come in and, and lead that effort.
Probably.
Which was going to cost some tens of thousands of dollars. And so is that something that should be in, in the CIP, as not as a study, but actually as, like, doing the work, investing in, investing in the ordinance?
But it's still not capital, right?
Well, this is my, this is my question.
That's why I was wondering that, too.
I think it's the kind of thing that, on December eleventh, if there's a clear consensus on the, part of the planning commission, that the unified bylaw is a priority in the next two to three years, then I think that messaging that on December eleventh would be important. You put the select board on notice that maybe not this year, you're not going to expect it to be funded, because it would, let's just throw out fifty grand, because the form-based zoning costs fifty grand. You know, getting the select board members used to this idea that come two or three years from now, you'd be looking at a substantial contribution for it. I mean, we'd have to work out where we think that grant funds would come, how much they would come, how much more.
Sure.
How much of the fifty thousand came from grants?
Well, there was, a lot of it came from grants, but it was something, it was back when the Regional Planning Commission was doing a type of project that they don't do anymore. So we, I think, probably paid something like seven or eight thousand out of the fifty, but they're not doing that kind of thing right now. So the best thing I would think of, if we just assumed fifty thousand dollars, is these municipal planning grants top out, I think, at twenty-five, so, and you need to match it, so it would be maybe half from the municipal planning grant and half from the... grant and half from the town.
I think they make up to 35 now.
Yeah, well. And, and, you know, there may be some other potential grant sources.
So you can add a fifth item of unified bylaw and figure out how to word that?
Yeah.
Because they're not meeting till the 11th, we have another meeting on the 5th, so we can...
And there are some good unified bylaws out there. I mean, it's, it's a very different community, but I would encourage you, if you're curious, it's, it's unlike any zoning regs that you've seen, perhaps, but willistens. It's in this question and answer format. Some people like it, some people don't. But it's a, you know, it would be an interesting model to start to get familiar with the kind of concept with.
Yeah, well, and certainly couldn't hurt to have to stick something out there on a years-out kind of thing. The subdivision regulations. Considering this was, well, again, a lot of this is just helping to reduce process, the question would be, what, what sorts of questions are, is there, is there deep discussion that we get into? This had come up in the past, we talked about it, it's here, there is language, there is motion language to be able to warn a hearing, which would most likely, at this point, be what, January? Could theoretically be the second one in December.
Yeah, probably, probably it would be January.
I, is, is there anything pressing that's coming, coming up that would rely on this change? I wouldn't necessarily want to hold up a process, but...
No, I don't think it would be a, I don't think, it would be a slight problem, assuming that the select board moves ahead with form-based zoning, but I don't know whether or not they're going to do that.
Yeah, I don't know that they would get that on their agenda before January anyway.
Given what we've heard about the budgeting, because they may be pretty busy with stuff until mid-January, so might not be that big a deal.
Yeah, so I guess, based on my first question, then, from, from this, are there any questions that we might be able to tackle in a short term? Or are there any strong feelings to, to hold off another meeting, or just, we could also just warn the hearing and have it the second meeting in December?
It seems, the changes seem pretty simple.
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, and it streamlines, streamlines process.
Seems like we could just approve it.
Yeah. There were those two proposals, one is just updating version one, version two, but I just want to be clear that we're talking about version one, we're talking about version two.
Very, well, version one would be at a minimum.
Yeah.
And if that's all we were willing to do, I'd say we just...
Version one's going to get no grant.
Right, version one is just, yes, that, we need to make the reference to the correct section in the, in the zoning bylaw. The, the second version of this essentially just, in, in effectively streamlining process, saying that a subdivision would exclude things like development of a parcel of land as a shopping center parcel, multifamily housing project, elderly housing project, if those have already been approved under Article 22, which is the form-based zoning. And form-based zoning would cover all of that, so it effectively just eliminate a step.
I was going to say eliminate one step.
Yeah.
I think it makes a lot of sense.
I agree.
That's why you have the form-based zoning.
Right, it is. I mean, I, yeah, I, I still have some just questions around the general, like, multifamily and elderly, elderly housing and some context around that, but it's, but from a process perspective, this makes sense.
We talked about this a couple weeks ago, Megan had concerns about this allowing too much, giving, giving the reins over, I think, I don't want to use her...
Oh, to form-based zoning?
Well, yeah, I think, I, I, I remember that, Neil, I think, but I think your concern was more with, with how much leniency there could be in form-based zoning. Not, not, I mean, I don't know.
Which doesn't seem to be the case, though.
Right.
Well, we have, so we have...
I remember, I remember advocating for, for this, and I remember her being like, I'm not sure I agree with that. I think that we're letting too much go out the door here.
I think, maybe summarize it as, there's stuff, something to be gained, but is there something to be lost?
Right, yeah.
And do we, do we fully understand what we would be giving up by making a change?
Yeah, so I just wanted to, I think this is okay.
And this is a matter of process, because even if we were to warn a hearing, discussion happens at the hearing as well.
That's a good point.
Sure.
So are we, are we debating whether to warn a public hearing at this point?
Yes.
I believe that we warn a public hearing.
Okay.
I'll second it.
And then we just need to have, and the motion's in here, we just need to agree on a date.
Yeah, and I think we are going to be looking at January 9.
So, do I...
So we're talking about version one, is the...
Version, version two.
Version two.
Yeah, I, I remember now, Megan's, and I, my, like, a little bit of trepidation, because it seems like the difference of the two is just, the version two lets shopping centers and multifamily housing in the form-based zoning areas...
Avoid subdivision review.
Avoid subdivision review.
Right, right.
Just those two building types, or project types.
Right.
Which seemed like, I, I remember, yeah, Megan was voicing that multifamily housing and shopping centers, you know, if it's a Kmart coming in, that's a pretty big deal, and why are we stream, you know, singling those projects out as being streamlined, whereas all the other ones would...
It's not, it's not that it's streamlined, it still goes through review. It's effectively eliminating a separate subdivision review, right?
Yeah, and I guess there are a couple of things to understand, is, is that it might, there might still be a subdivision. This is, this is something that would really only matter if there wasn't a subdivision of land, because if there's a real subdivision of land, you're not going to avoid creating a subdivision, if you get what I'm saying. But, I mean, I understand, I understand her point. It isn't a one-to-one substitution, you know? The subdivision regs are not all in form-based zoning. But for those who are concerned about, you know, the amount of time and whatever it takes to get through a permitting process, there would be a permitting process, it would be the form-based zoning permitting process. The other thing about this list is that you could shorten the list, you could end up deciding that the most important place to provide relief is for the housing projects, and you could just strike that first, except those reviewed, blah, blah. And that would just mean that the multifamily projects would avoid the subdivision. Or maybe if you just wanted it to be the elderly, you know, you could just do the third of the three. But you don't have to do all three, you could do...
The question is, do we want to encourage redevelopment on Route 7? And do we want to encourage redevelopment using the form-based code? Or do we want to incentivize, you know, them to use the other version, which is so horrible? So I, I mean, that, that's really, it's an existential question, really, for me, it boils down to that.
There's still a lot of rules, if it is or something.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's not like this is like the Wild West and go, go crazy. I mean, it's still a review process.
Right, exactly.
And it's a review process under something that is much more prescriptive than anything that we have under the current zoning. So I feel personally comfortable with this. I feel like this would incentivize somebody to use the form-based zoning, which I thought was what the goal was.
If it fast-tracks their projects within certain guidelines?
Yeah, as long as they're doing what they're supposed to do.
They know what they're dealing with, at least.
Yeah, and, and warning the hearing, we can still have more discussion on it, and ensure that Megan can, yeah, have her questions as well.
So should I move to, on January 9th, is that, that's what I'm saying, okay. I move to direct staff to warn a public hearing to be held on January 9th, 2020, I would think, right?
Yes.
Regarding amendment of the subdivision bylaw, the amendment, if, if enacted, would modify the definition of the terms subdivision, major subdivision, and minor subdivision, as reflected in documents previously distributed and hereby approved for discussion at public hearing.
You might want to specifically say version two.
Oh, and version two, I'm talking about version two.
All right, moved by Kate. Seconded by Neil, by her first, I think.
I think Neil was first, Ed.
All in favor?
Aye.
I second it.
All right, all right. And then the associated bylaw report?
Oh.
And that didn't refer to version one or two, did it?
No, 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 I'm sorry, let's see, oh, I move to approve the associated subdivision bylaw change report dated November 14th, 2019, for version two, and direct staff to distribute said report and copies of the amendment proposal as required by statute.
Moved by Kate?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Steve? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right.
And just to clarify, the way that the report dealt with the difference was the brackets around subdivision, you got it?
Right.
So those will be removed.
Okay, so that will, that will be a good discussion in early January? And the, yeah, I guess the last thing, well, was there any other business?
We've already, I was going to mention this budget session, and I was going to talk about the planning grant whole process, and we've covered that, so I don't have anything else.
All right, and then the, yeah, I was going to comment on some select board things, but can maybe do that another time. So as far as meetings, next, next one, December 5th, there's stormwater, we still have Tom and maybe Chris?
That was right.
Okay.
I've got to double-check that, that's, I think he ended up saying that the earlier one was going to work.
I think that's what I remember. So tentatively, then, it would be stormwater, I think, probably a follow-up to SIP, to SIP, if we can work on a statement, and then we can review it in that meeting. And depending on where we are with those maps for the plan amendments, we could potentially warn for that as well. And I would also, based on the previous conversations we had, one thought that I had earlier today was to have a discussion just around some of these key documents and how things interact. Doesn't necessarily need to be at the next meeting, but I think in the next couple, two or three, that might be beneficial, especially with new members. And then a discussion around Route 7 corridor adoption, the various plans that have been in place, just to start getting our heads around what might go into that and unified bylaw. So those would be just topics I'd keep an eye on. Is there anything else?
Sounds like enough.
That's good, yeah. Take a motion to adjourn, then.
Seconded.
That was moved by everybody and seconded by everybody?
I'll second it.
I'm going to say moved by Kate and seconded by John. All right, all in favor?
Aye.